Are you stacking with the road stuff?
I was planning that we could so that you could get out.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yep.
Till tomorrow.
Alright.
Is there, I know they predicted something for Thursday night and Friday.
The news, I just was listening to the news on the way over here and they were saying that it is supposed to, they called it likely a near miss. It is supposed to track south of New England.
Russ Merely said it looks like it's come a little closer than what they originally.
That's what I heard.
Okay, that was just like, just in the car driving over here.
I'm gonna go with that one.
Is there any, anything else predicted out from that Sunday?
Yeah, maybe something.
Cause I'm hoping to go to Canada this weekend, but I'm hoping to go to Canada to see my grandfather, but.
Yeah.
They're gonna have less snow than if you were going to Boston.
Were you flying out of Boston or Portland?
I'm not going anywhere.
Driving, driving.
You're driving to Canada?
Nova Scotia, yeah.
Ooh, yeah, Nova Scotia's taking it pretty hard this.
Yeah, cause some of, I actually saw a good video of a train going through Brunswick.
Yep.
I don't, that's pretty cool. Moving something that heavy with not being able to see a thing.
I know.
Windows are open.
I did hear that the crash in front of the Get and Go was on YouTube.
Yes, it is.
It's getting a lot of hits on YouTube.
I love the guy turning into, he just kinda pauses, waits for the car to arrive and then goes in.
Looks like it's a truck, maybe it's Mark.
You David?
I'm Paul Chase.
Paul Chase.
Yeah.
David, I was, I was thinking the last name, I don't know why I came up with David.
That's alright.
You're a lot showing up for a budget meeting.
Well, I've been trying to get here for two months, things keep popping up, our schedules are pretty far.
I can imagine.
I appreciate it. Patience, I don't have anything, so unless you guys have questions for me, I'm happy to.
Okay, we're just, we're doing a budget workshop on budget tonight.
You've been.
I'm sure you're up to your eyeballs in budget discussions these days.
I'm on the tax, I'm on the tax giving too.
You've been made aware of the conflict between the, between the county and the budget, Andes Garden County and Andes Garden Budget Committee and towns and stuff like that. Might have to.
Yeah, it's an interesting, it's an interesting topic.
Good morning.
Mr. Blake?
Oh, we know it.
Last time I saw you, you were on the roof.
I was, my last one too.
I thought there was a beer in your hand at first and I thought, well, that's a little cavalier for a budget meeting.
Pretty good idea though.
Why not bring more?
That'll be for the next budget meetings.
Alright, anytime, John. Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. We do have four out of five selectmen, so we have a quorum. And we're doing budget workshops again. Sean has to be at the panel selectmen meeting by seven, so we'll go straight to Rhodes to look at that first. Yeah, those are the ones that changed. And so she gave us new ones for anything that changed. And I believe there is a new Rhodes one in there.
Yep, and a bit more information too.
I know we've been through this once.
Yep.
And I know that there's not a lot in it except we can reduce, but I also feel like we are increasing it and.
That's as close as I can get to the difference between, so last year, we actually cut fifty thousand out of it. And that was basically the paving line.
Yep.
So, two thousand thirteen was one million, two hundred and fifty-two, five eighty-one. This year, right now, what we have proposed is one point two nine one million. And so it's roughly three percent increase from two thousand thirteen, roughly. It's a little bit more. So just so that, that's, that's as close as I could come. I think I probably missed a couple of items under two thousand fourteen and two thousand thirteen, cause we were pulling from all sorts of different lines.
And, you know, my, my one sort of underlying thought in all of this is that we have stood repeatedly in front of the residents of this town and said, starting on public works department, we, it is not going to cost any more money, that we are going to do, spend the same amount of money and hopefully get more work done. So that's sort of just, I wanna make sure that we are staying under our previous spending.
The only thing to take into consideration on that is the plowing budget was increasing by five percent each year along that line. So, if we had continued that route into two thousand fifteen, we'd have been, we'd be probably well over where we are.
I'm okay making that argument a couple of years into it. I'm a little bit uncomfortable making that argument in year one. So, you know what, I'm just, I feel like it's important that we, we live up to, to what we said about what the numbers were gonna be, particularly as we present the first full year of a public works, to already be kinda making excuses why it's creeping up over, I think really cuts into our credibility.
I, I did look through a couple of these things. I found a couple of lines we might be able to and, but first, because it's the first thing on here with the labor, Ruth put together something that gave us several options to look at for, for labor. And that would, depending on which option we go with, we might be able to actually save some along there. And it depends on how we look at, you know, how many, how many months of winter we look at and.
Absolutely. And I don't mean to suggest that there's anything extra. I mean, I've, I've looked at budgets for this town for several years now and I think our budgets are pretty lean. But I also know the pushback and, and you know what.
I, I mean, I think, I think we can look at this and see if there's one of, so which one did you propose to us to? Was that the original proposal?
Well, I, I changed the proposal and, and what I came up with was, was in the yellow and, and it's basically a mix between proposal four and six. It's that one, yep. Nope, you just passed it. It's the one that has the road commissioner stuff on it too. You should have it right after your Rhodes thing, Mark.
It's right here?
Yep. Now, I, the first thing you need to look at is, is are any of the guys gonna get any raise? I mean, cause that's, that factors into it.
I, I imagine we will be looking at something, I mean, at least looking at it. I don't know how much.
Okay. I factored in a three percent raise, so what I did was I took the two options. I did it several ways. I, I did it, how do I explain this? I did it based on, on the hours that we accumulated in January and December, well, last December, this January. And obviously, they were pretty nasty months. December was thirty thousand dollars worth payroll, January was thirty-three thousand dollars worth payroll. So if you figure, depending on whether you figure four months of winter or five months of winter, depends on, you know, thirty thousand dollars one way or the other. So if I take three percent raise, and this is assuming that the guys don't work any overtime during the summer, part-time people don't work any time over the summer except for Parker who does the parks and stuff like that. And possibly, we were thinking, looking into the mowing. So the difference between the options are between a five-month or a four-month winter. So four months at thirty thousand or five months at thirty thousand.
So, question for Sean. How often do you think you'd expect us to be at that, thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand? In our, in a typical winter, would we be at that all five months, all four months, or?
I would say no, but defining a typical winter.
I, I mean, I know things fluctuate, but, but you usually don't get slammed five months in a row.
Usually no, usually no. But patterns have changed over the past few years, but you know, it's.
How about kicking the guys out after forty hours if there's gonna be good weather? I mean, if there's, I know snowplowin' is snowplowin' and they gotta get overtime, I understand that, but if you tap out forty hours in three days, the next two days are good weather, as long as the equipment's ready to rock and roll again.
Yeah.
I hate to see a guy come in and get overtime and wash a truck.
Yeah, but I also, I hate to have these guys come in and be on call from November through April. This is why they do it. They do it for the overtime and the wintertime. And I, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying.
Everybody has to stick, I mean, our budget, like, like what we're saying is, is over and we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to look for some, some way to tighten it up. I, I don't wanna take away from the guys at all, they're doing a great job, but then again, I don't, I don't wanna say have a free day of overtime washing trucks when.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
We can tighten up on the budget a little bit.
We do, we do have one advantage over some, is the fact that we're a calendar year right now, so we know, you typically, the, November, December typically aren't really terrible.
Right.
And so on. So you already know, after you've gone through your first part of winter, whether we're gonna be, whether we're gonna be really close to it or not. And we could do something such as restrict hours for a couple, for a couple of weeks in the summer, you know, something like that to be able to save if, because we already know what, what it's gonna look like. So if we, if we do do something that's a little less, we have that flexibility.
And maybe also do kind of a hybrid of, of what Mike is talking about, of having, build in a certain amount of overtime, but do a balance between some overtime and some, just if, if it's gonna, if we're gonna have nice dry weather and people have been plowing. I mean, some, at this point, they'd probably prefer the time off.
I don't wanna take away from the guys. I mean, forty hours is what we promised them and that's what they need to support the families and that's what I wanna give them.
Oh, absolutely.
A couple of weeks ago, they got about a hundred hours in that week, but I think most of the daytime hours that they would have been there, they were there plowing anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the thing is, is what's happening right now, even though there's a lot of hours and stuff, is, is truck maintenance isn't happening. The trucks aren't getting cleaned the way they need to be getting cleaned. I, I'd rather look other ways. And I do need to say, before we get too far into this, that, that I didn't build this budget with any target in mind. I went on historical numbers. I weren't trying to command at a certain percentage or anything, so I'm wide open to looking at any areas that we can look at.
Well, that's why I want you to do the budget too, I don't, what you need.
I mean, the two lines that I was looking at before was fuel account and equipment maintenance, line thirty-one and thirty-two. And I was looking at, see if we could take five out of each. My reasoning for the equipment maintenance is, last year we spent thirty-five thousand, it's a fifty-one percent increase. And I realize we only had part, partial year, but I, thirty-three percent on top of the thirty-five thousand.
For four months.
Yeah, an extra four months would be approximately twelve or thirteen thousand increase. So that's where I was looking. I, I did thirteen just to give us a little bit more. So that would make that line forty-eight thousand. That was one thought I had for a little bit.
I noticed that too, for four months, that was a, was a big, big jump for four months. I understand it's probably the worst four months you're trying to plan for, but.
And I wondered about the, instead of tripling the, the small tools line from two thousand to six thousand, could we double it and save a couple thousand there too?
Well, we spent thirty-five hundred on eight months last year.
Minor equipment, I guess is what it was.
So, so four, if you project that out, that would be about forty-eight hundred.
But we were starting from scratch.
Yeah, and this, I know he.
So I would expect that number to be quite significant.
He mentioned last time that there were several pieces of equipment that you were looking.
Right.
At, and then, and then in the next year, but we could, we could spread it out over two years maybe, I don't know.
Well, yeah, my only point is that there, I'm sure that there's tons of equipment that would be great to have, but, but can we spread, because we are a new department, starting from the ground up, can we spread some of those purchases out over time? Maybe we don't start with the dream tool chest. Maybe we start with the workable tool chest and then move on to adding things over time. Or maybe these are, right, or maybe these are critical things that, that you need to have right away.
That's what we did last year, if it went for not the dream tool. When we started, when we bought the mechanics tools for the shop, Scott's got his own tools, but we got stuff for the shop. And really, it's not, I mean, I'm open to that, you know.
But I don't wanna be cutting funds that we need to really get to.
Do you remember, you actually had some specific things you mentioned the other day. Do you remember what it was?
Chop saw, hydraulic press, need a good bench grinder. And that's, you know, that stuff's not a lot of money, I'll, I'll say. What, do we have a, a place in mind where we would like to be with this?
Listening to what Sarah said, she'd probably like to be about the one point two five million from two thousand thirteen. You can't count two thousand fourteen, cause we purposely went low.
Right.
We, we gouged the paving, so we can't go with that one, cause we purposely went low, but you'd like to be.
Everything was gonna cost and we.
Yeah, you'd like to be somewhere around the one point two five million.
Yeah, I would like to be telling the town that we're not spending, that we've started this new department and we're not spending vast sums of money more than, than.
And, and to be honest, three percent over two years is not a vast sum more, but we would like it closer.
I think also when we, when we projected this and put this out to the townspeople, we did put out part of two thousand fifteen, cause had we gone and renewed the contract for one year, which was what we were thinking about in the fact that this didn't come through, was part of that two thousand fifteen, that would have been part of that five percent increase. So I don't think we're trying to buffalo them on anything as far as, and tell them something that ain't fact, is, that's the fact of what was gonna happen if we didn't do something. So I, I think you could figure that, that little bit extra in that, in there, and you're still on track of what you, what we was telling them, so.
So is, is everybody okay with the two thousand out of these, the small tools?
Yep. Which line was that again?
That was thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
And everyone okay with the equipment maintenance five thousand out?
Yes.
Equipment maintenance, we're going down to what?
Uh, that would be going down to forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
And the other one I had mentioned was fuel, and I, I think that needs a little discussion just to.
So in January, just so you guys know, we spent ten thousand, almost ten thousand eight hundred dollars worth of fuel.
So, and this month will probably, this month could come close.
And fuel's creeping, it seems like it's getting happier.
I used three fifty a gallon. I didn't dare to shave it back too much.
So, so if we project that another ten thousand this month, that's two sevenths of the budget, of course. The winter, the summer months, you gotta be a lot less. Uh, do you have a summer month there? Like, go back to September or some, some.
I have to change programs, we, give me a second.
It's a fine balance, because you know, I also wanna make sure that we're leaving enough money in here so that we're getting stuff done, cause that's the other piece of having this department is, townspeople wanna see what's going on on the roads.
June to October, we were thirty-four hundred month average.
Thirty-four hundred a month and ten thousand, so we're talking average of six thousand, roughly. There's more summer months than winter months, so. Six times twelve is seventy-two, so seventy thousand is close, but that thirty some, thirty-four hundred was at a higher cost at that point. That was over four dollars or close to four.
Well, we weren't paying that price, but it was up, I think the highest we paid was maybe three, I don't know if I told them that, but three sixty in that area.
So sixty, well, I'm, I'm just doing four winter months, that's forty thousand and then eight summer months. Uh, there's probably twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred, I mean, twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand, so you're talking sixty-seven thousand somewhere, so maybe, maybe we don't have the room to move on that.
I mean, yeah, it depends on how much it goes up, but it seems to be creeping already, so there may not be a lot of room there.
Any other thoughts in here?
So, for the time being, we're gonna leave the fuel.
For now, so.
Scott, do you use it?
Yeah. So if, that number is now down to two eighty-four, five seventy-six, if that number.
Sean, do you see any place that we can cut?
Well, it's, I mean.
I mean, here's what I was telling you, what we like to have, cause you see, I mean, you understand what we're up against, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Most of the stuff, I figured fairly close, without a lot of wiggle room.
The technology, you absolutely need two grand in that one, or? I know you did, you had a thousand to start with, but you used nine forty.
That's that Freightliner software for the.
Software.
Software for the equipment.
For the, for the Freightliner, which that will, you know, a couple.
Pay off, we understand. Cut that a little bit the other night.
Yeah, we, we went to one radio instead of two.
Yep, yep.
The road commissioner salary can probably be cut. I was facing it, knowing that, well, thinking that things are gonna change, obviously. And we would be now the ones employing a road commissioner and sharing with panel. I have the road commissioner making, I think, seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, I have no idea what road commissioner makes, so this is like pure guess of mine, but when I went back and I looked at the MMA information, it looks like a road, or actually a public works director would make probably about fifty-five, fifty-seven thousand a year. Does that sound?
Yeah, there's other factors that go in into where we landed with live.
We're sharing, we're sharing, so it's, it's double the roads.
Road responsibility.
Well, I doubled the population, I didn't know the road.
Yeah, double, double the road, double the crew basically, but so you're talking a crew of four here and a crew of three.
Yeah, and thirteen in the one at a time.
So, I mean.
So what would you expect to pay?
That's a.
I mean, we, you know, we may be able to, to at least make a little bit of room there.
And there doesn't seem, looking at these numbers, there actually doesn't seem to be any correlation between size of the town.
I see that.
And the, and the car.
And even geographic location either.
And some of that was, is based on, you know, some of where we were with it is based on the fact that you've been in a position for a long time and experience and, and all of that, where somebody else is gonna be.
Right, though I would expect, if, if we're trying to hire somebody running two departments, that you want somebody with some experience. So you don't, you don't wanna bring in somebody completely new, I don't think.
No, you definitely want somebody familiar with everything.
So, looking at the, I'm thinking of the labor line again. Are you comfortable with what's in here? Do you think we could do anything? So right now, she's put the two hundred, she's put two hundred and fifty thousand basically, which is kind of the average of option four and six, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, there's an extra three, two thousand five hundred or something in there.
Bulky waste pickup.
Bulky wastes, okay.
Cause we took that out of parks and rec and factors in about a three percent raise for the apartment.
Right, that would factor in an ab, roughly.
Only for the full timers.
So that is basically status quo, really, ultimately.
It's the average of, yeah, it's, so it's planning on four and a half months of winter.
Yeah.
Of, of heavy winter.
Right.
Cause those thirty thousand months are, were definitely very heavy, are definitely heavy months, either through ice or snow.
Right.
We could just go with the four month with the raise, the two thirty-nine, one thirteen, and hope we have a light winter next year.
But I, I would rather that we return money at the end that we haven't spent than we end up without enough money to pay the plow guys.
Really what happens, and again, this is the benefit of us, you know, on the department, is we have some control over that. So if we do end up coming out of the winter, while we over expended on our payroll line, we'll make adjustments somewhere else. Whether it be whatever gravel or whatever line, you know, to make up that difference in the summertime. So we've got some control over that. I wouldn't wanna go and just use compensation, cut that just to make the numbers work.
Right.
And hope, you know, that, that things turn out right, so.
Question two. That forty-five thousand number for the road commissioner, that was everything all lumped together, right? So when we, when we look at this, we're gonna, we're, if we become the employer, we're gonna be splitting it out by FICA, Medicare.
Right, and it's, it's split out now.
Down below. I mean, down on this, cause do, do we actually, so the FICA, so we actually, this, the actual salary is seventy thou, seventy-five thousand? I didn't think so. I, I didn't think, I think that, I think that is a lump sum of all the.
Right, I don't think it's a.
I don't think we split it out.
Chart is salary and then the benefits, the forty-five, and then all the benefits on top of it. I think the forty-five we pay is our portion of the whole package.
So if I change that number, it'll change everything else?
Well, it, it would, yes, it would, if you change that number there, you'd have to add it to FICA, Medicare, but at this, today, I don't think it really, because we're based on the bottom line and so on. If, if we end up over on FICA, Medicare and stuff like that, next year we'll fix that, but, but the, and the salary would be less.
But what I'm saying is, is it's set up so that if I change the salary in the top line, it will automatically change the FICA and everything.
Right, so right now, those lines.
So if I take them.
Those lines are high, because these guys are, these lines currently.
Include everything.
Fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Yes, it includes everything with a forty-five thousand dollar salary at a forty percent split. So we're paying, well, we're paying sixty percent.
So I believe you're sixty-five, yeah. So if, can you do a calculation on sixty-five, sixty, forty split? Cause that's, that would, that'll help that line.
That'll drop that by a fair amount.
Yeah, though we'd also have to add, we'd need to make sure we added in health insurance on that, because that's not in there. Is it? Oh, it is.
Yeah, health insurance is in there.
That's there, okay.
And that's just a static number two.
We'll, we'll have to increase that to make it to, for a family plan, just in case.
That makes our portion of the salary thirty-nine thousand.
So thirty-nine, so that gives us six thousand back on that line.
Yeah, and that actually drops main per is Medicare and workers' comp also. Do you want the numbers on those? It's not a huge difference.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, main per is fifteen ninety-nine, Medicare is five sixty-six.
Hold it. I get my lines lined up here.
Number nineteen.
Main per is what now?
Main per is fifteen ninety-nine.
Yep.
Medicare's five sixty-six. And then the, the health insurance stays the same, but the workers' comp would change to thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
That's what it is now.
Same as it is.
Oh, okay.
So that health insurance, is that based on eight months of family?
That's based on sixty percent of full insurance for the year.
Okay, for, starting from January.
What does that do to line number seven?
Yeah, yeah.
So, line number seven goes to thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
So that lowers the subtotal down there to.
There's your one point two five right there, I mean.
Here, let me print up your sheet for you guys. Here we go again.
So, that, I mean, that gives us another six, so we're down to two seven, two seventy-eight roughly, uh, one point two seven eight. So, we're slowly. I'd say we could change the health insurance because it's, you, you're gonna have four months without paying, without paying that, but, um, the only problem is, when we come back next year, they're gonna go, why the big increase? So, um.
It's not a huge number.
Well, uh, two-third, it would be three thousand dollars.
It doesn't, I mean, whether we leave it in or not.
Yeah.
Every year, that is the number one biggest sticking point with the budget committee, is the fact that we provide health insurance to the employee and we pay a portion of the family.
Right.
And every year, they argue about it.
Eighty, eighty, twenty on both.
Right, and, and in reality, the amount of money that it would save us to do it differently is not huge, and.
Unless we completely cut the family, yeah.
That's how most municipalities do it.
It would be roughly eight thousand dollars an employee that uses family that we'd, we'd, we'd be able to cut.
Yeah, what's Lisbon doing, Mike?
They, uh, spoke to, they have opted out too.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we have an opt-out, yeah, it's not very much, I forget, a hundred dollars a month or something.
I have no idea.
It's, it's not a huge amount, but you do get a little something for opting out. Anywhere, so we've got approximately twenty-six thousand difference right now. Uh, or, and that's roughly two percent more than two thousand thirteen.
What about line twenty-nine?
What's twenty-nine? Oh, that's true, if we hire, if we hire the road commissioner, he could, we don't have to, we don't have to pay for the truck any, you can, he can use Durham's truck.
Right.
Yeah.
It's on the side, yeah.
That's what we do, yes, that's what we're gonna be the main employer.
So.
We have a, a truck that's available to.
We, I mean, we have two three-quarter, right?
We've got one.
We've got one and, and then a one, so the road, the foreman could go around and, one of them could go around in one ton.
Foreman is gonna be in one of the one tons.
Yeah, okay.
Set up with a tool bar, tool racks and everything on it.
So, so, and you could use a three-quarter, and you could use panels when you're in panel or whatever, I mean.
Right, Durham and Durham.
So we could.
Just do the same situation where panel lets pays us.
Right, if, if they wanted, I mean, cause they've got a, they do have the pickup too and.
Yeah, but, yeah, switching trucks to, what happens with the job is, is, is.
Yeah, you.
You don't run it as two separate towns, you're in here, you're running it as just one whole.
Or, or, or you can.
Tucked on the town line.
Don't, you don't switch during the day, you, you, you kinda, one day you're in that one, and.
Yeah, yeah. Cause you wanna, you wanna be in our truck and then be on the wrong side of panel, and you gotta come back here or vice versa. Run it back to the garage.
Two, two days, you're, two days you're in panel's, there in panel's truck, three days there in Durham's truck.
So we could get rid of that one.
I, I think, I mean, I, I.
There's some workable solution.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's gonna have to be a discussion between the both board, both boards and how they're gonna deal with that end of it.
Right.
You know, but yeah, I mean, for the time, you know.
We have the truck now, we don't, we shouldn't need to.
Right, exactly.
Right, so there's another forty-five hundred, so seventy-eight, so down to seventy-four? Two seventy-four, one two seventy-four, so. If you've got it calculating, if you, if you can.
Do.
I'm, I'm just doing rough numbers off the top of my head.
The other night you had mentioned too, that we were missing.
My bottom line's gone to twelve seventy-three, one eighty-five.
Twelve seventy-three, so yeah, within, you're, you're within, uh, you're within a couple thousand, a few thousand in mind, cause I said twelve seventy-four something, so twelve seventy-three something, so yeah, we're close.
And when you were looking at your numbers, did that include, oh, it did, the projects line?
Yes.
I was hoping to garner another couple hundred thousand wiggle room.
No, a couple hundred thousand wiggle room, we'd already be great.
I know, that didn't include the project line, what we all said.
No, I already got that in there. What, what were you asking Sean, us?
Yeah, Josh.
The other night, when we were trying to crunch the total numbers of where we were previously, when my cop was plowing and we were doing, you, you, you had mentioned there was money that we weren't accounting for, has that been accounted for now?
Line and that's in that.
It's all, so that's all accounted for, I don't know, yeah, okay.
That's all the projects that we subbed out to somebody.
That was a separate line that we had, was capital projects or projects they called.
Yeah, it wasn't really capital, but.
It was minor.
Yeah. All right, so we're twenty-one thousand at this point.
Which is, right now is probably from all the extra from the plow. That's, that definitely has eaten up a lot. And I've thought about the same thing that Mike was thinking about, if you could cut that somewhere, but one of my concerns about, I don't want to see happen, is I don't wanna cut back on the part of, uh, labor where the PMs are done. Including, in some cases, washing to get stuff off the trucks that don't rust, cause PMs, in my opinion, are huge. I work for a company and they're huge on PMs, and I can almost never step onto a piece of equipment and find a problem because they're well-maintained. And, to be honest, probably when we trade them in, the people that buy them are thinking they're buying a Cadillac, cause they're well-maintained, and I, you know, PM maintenance, I, I'm, that and training, I'm really far, cause I think it's, it makes a huge difference in your departments, no matter what they are, so. I've thought about that, is there a place you can cut some of the labor, I don't know.
I think there's other places, because with the labor, what it boils down to is even if we, if we cut materials, we cut everything, we've still got forty miles of roads, forty-six miles of roads, times two, that need to be ditched, you know, so if we've got fuel and labor, you know, it's gonna be productive, you know.
Why was the tree cutting so far over?
Because when we had the ice storm last year.
And I know we've historically contracted most of that out, do we continue to contract that out, or does the crew do more of that?
I left that in there for stuff that we don't have the means to handle.
And with an ice storm, I mean, we, I think we have to have the capacity to be able to contract it out, just to keep up with it.
No, we've got stuff around town that we don't have the ability within our crew to deal with, so I left that line in there for that. Uh, we've got stuff up on staff, we've got stuff everywhere that it's more than what we can handle with our crew and our equipment.
Sean, did I finally get the sand and salt rate back down?
Yes, you did.
All right, good.
Thank you. I didn't, I was going off my sheet last week, so I didn't even know.
Oh, what, did that change?
It, it did change from last week because I had the wrong numbers.
Okay, so, cause like, the salt went up, didn't it?
Yeah.
Sand went down.
I, I thought, I thought so, cause I, I was thinking that that number looked higher than the last time I saw it.
And, like I said, I didn't realize it, cause I was going off my spreadsheet on my computer that had the changes in there. And then when I was sitting down over the weekend going through the things, and I noticed on the spreadsheet that, that I received, and I was like, huh, I changed that, but anyhow. We talked about it.
We did talk about it, and, uh.
Yeah.
It was my fault.
Fifteen thousand more than it was the last time.
What about the, uh, plow blades? I know you said you went to, uh.
I cut that back.
Yeah, I, I remember you say you did, I couldn't remember, cause we went to carbide, you said.
Well, we, we purchased a bunch this year, and we're getting the life that I would expect out of them, so I cut that one back. Um, I cut it eight thousand dollars, actually.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah.
From last year. I mean, is there a little bit of wiggle room there?
A little wiggle room I could handle, it's just, you know, I, I don't wanna make it so tight that.
Right.
You know, you, you can't make it so tight that you got nothing, no matter what. So you're looking at about, what, twenty thousand, you said, difference at this point from what you?
Yeah, twenty-one thousand, yeah.
Twelve seventy-three, one eighty-five is the bottom line right now.
That's, you're comparing that one to?
Two thousand thirteen, so this is over, that's over a two-year, it's roughly a percent a year at this point.
And if we had done what we originally, one of the things that, that I think we should also keep in mind is that we shortened the bond term.
Right.
On these, so the payments are, if we had gone to the full bond term that we were permitted to under the warrant, these payments would have been smaller, so the bond payments would have been smaller, which would have given us a little bit more room.
Only the building one.
Right.
Yeah.
And instead, we had the opportunity to, to shorten the term, save the town money in the long run on interest.
Five years off it, isn't it?
Yes, so.
So, you know, I think that there's some.
Twenty, uh, you know, roughly twenty percent more, twenty-five percent more, or something like that.
Right, yeah.
So that, that would actually be your twenty thousand dollars right there.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious as to, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, and I, and I will now, seeing that with this, cause I'm just curious what that half year of twenty fifteen was if we had to, cause I'm quite sure that's, that would make up way more than the difference, and I'm not looking for a seduce, I just wanna make sure what compared to what you said.
Yeah. We would have been paying probably close to seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, it's another fifty grand.
Seven thirty-seven.
Seven, so seven thirty-seven, so, um, you're talking sixty percent of the budget would be going to plow, just.
Right.
Just the plowing contract, and now I'd, I'd say it's probably closer to forty-five, fifty percent instead of, instead of sixty, so we're getting to do more with the same money.
Right, that's what we was looking at, yeah.
And that's what we sold.
Right, and that's, it wasn't about savings, it was spending the same and getting a lot more done, and I think we've done that.
Do we wanna find anything more here, or are we good with this at this point?
Let's see what we could possibly find. And the other lines you could cut would be fifty or fifty-one, and try that, he's gonna cut us, so.
Well, he already has.
I'm not, I'm just gonna say, yeah, it's gonna cost us more in the long run, that's all.
Yeah, oh, you're not gonna say it's not my problem?
Yeah, we're at a spot where we gotta make the tough choices, cause I mean, the can's been kicked down the road long enough, and it's been kicked, been kicked right into our laps, so.
Still not making the toughest choice yet, and that's the bond.
Yeah.
And at some point, we, we're going to have to.
We have to do it, we have to bite the bullet and do it, I mean, people wanna see roads getting fixed.
Or grind them all back up.
And there had been, you know, a lot of talk when this was passed, that we would be able to slide a bond payment in for road renewal and still be under the cap, but that's just not realistic.
No, and, and I, I, I believe I always said that you're gonna have to do it no matter which way you go.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have to spend that money sometime, and, no matter which way you go.
Right, and either scenario, we would need a bond.
All right, so are we all set on this for now?
I, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
I did have a, uh, person come to me two days ago, told me to pass this information, I'm not gonna mention his name, cause I don't know if he wants to on TV, but he was one of the guys that wasn't really sure that the, uh, road crew was gonna be able to make the roads look as good as they were in the past couple of years. But he said, I, I want you to pass this on, and I'm very happy that they do, I think they've done a fine job.
And they've had a tough year to.
Yeah, they had a tough year to start up, learn, so.
That's so wrong.
And he was one of those guys that, he was a little doubtful, so.
I hear just the opposite, so, it's mixed emotions up there.
Well, it all depends on future things, I would, Mike.
This is, this is a person from Lisbon, Phyllis O'Donnell. She is not happy.
Fifty-one percent.
That's right. This week, please. Did you, you had something you wanted to?
Well, I'll be here.
You'll be here?
I'll be here tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Do I get a choice? Do I get a choice?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, we'll be here.
Now, onto the panels line.
Yeah. Thanks, Sean.
See ya.
I was, um, I was talking to Ruth today, there's some stuff that came up at the planning board, the last planning board meeting. Um, and I'm hoping I'm not stepping on anybody's toes here, but time is too short to do this any other way. The, of course, as you all know, the chairman of the planning board had resigned, and the planning board hasn't got around to issuing a new chair, and I know that, um, Todd Bowyer was trying to work up some stuff in regards to the budget, but it's circumstances put them kinda behind the eight ball and what needed to get to you guys right away, but the discussion that came up at the last planning board meeting was trying to figure out how to approach, um, developing some coherency in the ordinances for the town of Durham. They're, they're an uncontrollable mess, it's almost impossible to adjudicate with them. Um, the planning board in itself doesn't have enough time, in the time that they spend, working through the ordinance as well as trying to take care of applications. Um, it was pretty universally understood that the money the town had spent in the last year or two in trying to get outside help in regards to organizing the, um, the ordinances, taking care of the conundrums and the inconsistencies and various things to try to make it a more coherent and usable document, was money poorly spent. Did they just, you didn't get what you were buying. So, the, the conversation wound up with, with the idea that, um, we could try to find some outside help that maybe would not be anywhere near as expensive, and try to take sort of a three-tiered approach to straightening out the ordinance. And the first thing is just getting rid of all of the inconsistencies and redundancies in the ordinance, and try to compress it a little bit and just make it more coherent, and not really make any structural changes or anything along that line. And this is talking through, for, in preparation for next year's town meeting, not this year's town meeting, but the money needs to be in the planning board budget to try to hire some additional outside help to do that sort of organization. Um, I had talked to the planning board about working with, uh, the town planner from Bodenham, who I've been working with now for about eight years, and basically did this for our ordinance. In the process of being able to do that, I think we could work sort of an inner-town agreement with Bodenham, so that the actual hourly cost of hiring outside help to do this would be substantially less than any other way we might approach it. Um, I'm not sure where it's gonna end up, I, that's not my say-so, but it did seem to me that it would be good if some of that was put into the planning board budget to allow for those guys to have the opportunity to at least get some of that started this year.
Do we have any, have we had any communication, now that we have switched from AbCOG to GP COG as to what, I know when, when GP COG came in and spoke with us, ordinance review, and, and some of that was, is part of the services they provide, and, and do we have any sense of how much assistance in that realm our membership buys us, essentially?
I, I, I don't know that, I haven't pursued that, I know the general's consensus is, is that approach in the past has wound up really getting us nowhere.
Right, but where we are starting with a, a, my only thought was where we're starting with a, a totally different organization, whether or not that was an avenue that was at least worth exploring.
Well, I think it's probably worth exploring, the, the, the conundrum comes into that if we don't have something in the budget to work with, and that's not an avenue that seems advantageous to us, then we're another year out in trying to deal with some of this stuff. And I think some of it, at least the structural part of the ordinance is probably the, the least expensive and the easiest approach, cause anybody that's been on either side of the table for the planning board through most of the last few years is pretty dissatisfied with what they're working with.
Does the planning board have a figure in mind?
I don't know that they do or they don't, but I think we need to punch something in, if you guys are, if it's, I, I was of the understanding that this is sort of your last meeting in trying to negotiate where you guys feel comfortable in getting this off to the next level, and something needed to be stuck in there.
So, what are you thinking hours-wise?
Thousand range as far as dollars, and I'm not sure hours. I said five to eight thousand, and I'm not sure as far as hours. Um, I have talked to Nicole Brien, and she was going to try to make it to the next planning board meeting to sit down with those guys and have a discussion. She's reviewing the ordinances now, I sent her copies of it. Um, and then those guys could sit down and have a conversation to see where they thought they may wanna go with it, or how it might work out. Um, I'm.
I know we did add some extra, or at least my recollection is that we, we added some extra money to the planning board budget, since they didn't really submit anything, to factor in the, the fact that we have to, we haven't looked at the comprehensive plan in many years. I mean, that, that we tried to build some, some extra into, to the planning board budget, and I don't know.
It's for extra meetings, but it doesn't include anything outside.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm just putting it on the table here, I think it's stuff that needs to come into play, and I know time was short to try to get something working into this, for those guys to work with. And with Joe gone and the, you know, some of the stuff, the transition between the chairman and the budget stuff that would have come through that seat has been a little bit disjointed, cause they, they didn't vote for chair. chairman and the budget stuff that would've come through, that seat has been a little bit disjointed, 'cause they, they didn't vote for Cherry yet, and Todd wasn't prepared to just take this on so quickly, it was kind of a quick transition. So, I, I'm not intending to speak for anybody other than the fact that if, if there's a figure that can get put in there, the planning board has something to work with at least, um, and, and moving forward, and then can make recommendations to you guys from their committee as to how they wanna approach it, what they think is the best. The ideas that we tossed around at the last meeting were the ones that seemed to me the most cost-effective, 'cause, um, in working it through the, through a system like the, um, uh, an agreement with the town of Bodenham, your costs are gonna be about as minimal as you can get them, it's not like hiring an independent contractor who's gotta have their own insurance and all the other stuff that comes with it, and they're gonna charge us sixty or seventy bucks an hour. The other thing the planning board did think of when it comes to things like, uh, AbCog and GPCog, that, you know, if it's someone who's working for the dollar, they're, they've got skin in the game, and we're apt to get a better, a better quality product and a larger amount of, of work done for the same amount of money, so, that's what I just wanted to do.
'Cause basically, I think we'd spent about forty-five hundred with, uh, AbCog and got basically nothing out of it.
Yeah, and they all feel the same way, they looked at what they got out of it, and after two or three years of work, they've done, barely got through the definitions.
That was, that was actually in some ways one of the things that kinda put, besides the cost-wise, 'cause GP, uh, GPCog's considerably cheaper, but we didn't get, when we, we contracted over and above, and we didn't get anything out of it.
And that's the fear with the planning board now, is to get back into the same hole of throwing good money after bad, and not really coming out of it with something effective.
Yeah, all we got was contract extensions, 'cause they weren't done yet.
Yeah.
Extend, extend.
I know, working with Nicole after eight years on the planning board, she took an ordinance similar to yours and turned it into something that really works like smooth right now, it's, our ordinance was that thick, it's now about that thick, it's a hundred and seventy-eight or a hundred and eighty pages. Um, she's, she's sharp, she's practical, she's easy to work with, and that, that type of approach, I think, even if it wasn't her, but that type of approach allows the taxpayers to get the most for their buck when they're working for this, and get something we can work with when we're done with it, so.
Being able to understand it would be a huge plus, especially when you don't turn the page and it contradicts what you just read, that's the problem, you have way too much of that now.
Most of that book is incomprehensible.
It is, I've said that for more times.
It really does need to be fixed, I mean, it just, just a structural, just a simple structural approach, you get rid of the conundrums, getting rid of the redundancies, getting rid of the inconsistencies of a saying it in one way on one page and a different way on the other, and, and reorganizing it would do a huge amount. Anyway, I'm, other than that, I really don't, I, I wish I had more for you, but I, I don't know what to do in regards to making recommendations other than I think it's a good idea.
But it sure would make sense to me. Especially somebody that's already been through it, and if it's similar to what I was, it should make it easier on that person and us.
Who was that person, Nicole?
Uh, Nicole Brien, the town planner, she's in Bodenham, yeah.
If we do that, how much would we add in, and would we do, would we do five, six? I mean, I, I can't see doing any more than five, 'cause, um, we're, we're already.
We're stretching the budget.
Yeah.
Can see putting it someplace else, to get some more bang for our buck, absolutely.
It's just, and, and we know, I mean, the reality is, is that regardless of, of what we do here, at least that the, the tentative numbers that are coming from the school are another nine or ten percent increase, and we continue, year after year, we cut this to bare bones and do as minimal progress on the municipal side, because we know we're gonna get.
I personally think that's why we're looking at the increase we are now, for the past five years, we've been doing one, uh, two percent in, uh, one, typically about one or two percent increases, last year we actually had a decrease in the budget.
Two percent decrease, and.
And, um, but taxes, we, we still went up because of the unexpended funds, but, um, you, you do that over a long period of time, and at some point, you get hit.
Yep.
And, um.
And it's frustrating, feeling like, you know, our hands are tied on the municipal end, because we know that, that this whole other piece that we have.
No control over.
Well, we would have, we could have a little bit more control if, if.
Get a couple of bus loads of people.
You know, if somebody actually went out of their way, and all the complaints about she didn't being in Freeport, to have buses available to take people down free of charge, and let her show up.
Well, that's true, they, yeah.
Yeah, what do you think we could get for hours for the five thousand, would it be somewhere around a hundred, hundred and, hundred and thirty, hundred and forty hours, something like that?
I would think somewhere in the hundred and fifty, I'm, I'm reticent to.
Yeah.
I'm reticent to speak for people, I'd rather have them speak for themselves.
I, I realize that.
You know, whatever you got for it, it would be, it would be money well spent, you know, and if it's, if it's a municipal exchange in regards to that part, you know, that, that like most other municipal employees, we're overqualified and underpaid, you're gonna get the best you got to go for, so.
So, if we put it, we actually still have the line there, it hasn't dropped off yet, under ordinance review, we, we could put five thousand, and if it's a contract, we don't have to worry about FICA, Medicare, or anything like that, it's, yeah.
I don't, but I admire your work, so, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing Stang tonight and bringing this to attention.
He ran back to do a phone call.
Um, I guess, for a couple minutes while we're waiting for him, I was, should we address, uh, Paul as far as the Andescoggin County issue?
Sure.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure he'd rather sit here for hours and listen to us go over our budget.
So, some background and, and so on, um, within, in the last two to three years, Andescoggin County passed a charter. And with that charter, it changed the number of commissioners from three to seven, and it changed the budget committee from like nine to fourteen, or something like that. This year was the first year with the full budget committee and the full number of, um, county, the commissioners coming in.
Didn't it also include a full-time administrator?
Yes, a full-time administrator will be hired sometime during this year. Um, within the charter, there was some language that seemed to give the budget committee the authority to set the, uh, compensation for the commissioners. And this year, the budget committee actually chose to, to drastically cut the compensation, uh, both uh, money and benefits-wise, they, they said, they cut, they said, we don't want any health benefits, and we cut their pay back to like three thousand. And during the time, the commissioners all agreed that that was what the charter said. After we made the decision, they went to their lawyer, and their lawyer gave them a different opinion, and they overrode the decision, and so now, they, they've done a budget that, with the, with the different numbers, uh, than what we had come up with, and, um, there's, I don't know all the details, there seems to be some state laws that may be involved, um, about the uh, authority of a budget committee versus, uh, versus the commissioners and, and things like that, and so on, but it's caused a lot of tension between the budget committee and the commissioners and the towns. Twelve out of the fourteen towns have written letters expressing, um, anywhere from mild to severe displeasure of their decisions, and um, at this point, I don't believe they're gonna change their decision, I think we've, we've got a four-page letter back from them, which we're gonna get at tomorrow's night's meeting, but, um, and we, I know.
Was the rationale for the reduction, and the reduction of benefits, the fact that their workload was diminished?
Yes, that, that their workload would be diminished at some point, the, the first part of the year it wouldn't be, because they're gonna have to look to higher and so on, but yes, that was, that was some of the rationale. Um, we're more concerned, not, not necessarily, I'm the first to admit that we may have cut too deep, but it was the fact that they don't seem to be following the charter, we did write a letter to the attorney general, which, and, who replied and basically said, this isn't my jurisdiction. And I believe some other towns, such as Lewiston, and there may be some other towns, have contacted their legislators to see what can be done as far as that goes to, but it's, it's a little bit of a jumbled mess.
Okay.
And.
I did see that in the press, I did see what was taking place, I guess I didn't realize that's what you were referring to.
Yes, it's been in the paper quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I could certainly do something, you know. And of course, you, you're aware of revenue sharing at risk here.
Yes, we know.
Questions, and you're on the tax committee?
I figured.
Well.
Should've brought a target.
No, it's, it's actually, it's a minor one, it's just an explanatory rather than, um, with the discussion about the, the potential property taxation of nonprofits, and I know that that includes certain nonprofits of, of particular sizes, and it excludes religious entities, and what about land trusts?
That's a question that's being looked at right now, depending on whether the trust is in an ownership or actually in a trust, and I, I understand that some trusts actually are mixed somehow, so.
Right, I do, I was thinking about that, there are plenty of land trusts that hold significant portions of
Yeah.
of real property, but they have no sources of income or anything, they're just conserving land.
That is a question that's in, and that's a question that's on all of our mind right now, how that's supposed to be looked at, you know, because there is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar value on nonprofits, anything above five-hundred-thousand dollars would be considered taxable by the.
Less certainly less of an issue here, but some of the land trusts that hold waterfront property and.
Right.
So, along the same line, um, I think, uh, Durham is, um, that's, has about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand, somewhere in that range, at stake in here, and, um, if they, if they do decide to cut revenue sharing completely, what, what would offset that, because we, we have no nonprofits that make over five-hundred thousand in town, all the non, most of the nonprofits in town are religious.
Right.
And they don't even come any closer near that either.
Yeah.
So, what would be, would there be anything that would offset?
Well, the proposal that the governor has put out is the intent, and they've done analysis on different married couples with two children, single parents with a child or two, retired couples, looking at the scenarios from the tax, the, the shift going from a, an income tax base to a consumer-based tax is to lower the income tax for recipients, basically, when they've done these estimates from the, uh, policy, tax policy group, generally, people come out a couple hundred dollars to a thousand dollars a head on their taxes, but you're looking at a taxed income going from five thousand dollars a year to thirty-three hundred, property tax going up probably about two hundred dollars per family based on the loss of revenue sharing, could be more, could be less, depending on the size of the family.
The, one of the questions that, that has come up, or that I've heard raised, is the notion that those are not necessarily happening in the same timeframe. Revenue sharing is, is going out much faster than income tax is going out. The two-year budget does not completely phase out income tax.
Yeah, they're talking, we're correct, so the numbers that they're talking about right now are bringing income tax from eight-point-whatever percent down to six-point-five and five-point-seven, five percent, depending on what your income threshold is. Uh, they're, they're saying that the, the income tax credit for, uh, where your, if your property tax is six percent of your gross adjusted income, anything above that is tax-deductible, if, if you're in that scenario. Homestead exemption goes away for people under the age of sixty-five, the ten-thousand-dollar exemption, it goes to twenty thousand for if there's anyone in the home that's over sixty-five. So, there's an increased homestead exemption on that side, so when they put all these numbers in play, it generally nets positive to the, to the taxpayer, to the citizen, for, for, for money that they're supposed to be over. We still have concerns, though, that we're asking the economists that are building these models to explain to us, 'cause I've heard from a lot of retirees that have said, I don't have taxable income, so therefore, if revenue sharing goes away and I go up two hundred or three hundred dollars for the loss, loss of revenue sharing, and I don't have the homestead exemption, they should be able to file for it, but that, there's some question there about whether people are really either know how to go after it, or have been using the advantage of the homestead credits. There, there's a chance that a lot of retirees are gonna go over, are gonna go up, so we need more definitions on how we're gonna offset. What about the property tax fairness as well, I'd heard that was gonna be tripled. I haven't heard that. No, I heard Jonathan Labonte talking about it the other day, and he used our town as an example, and, uh, he said basically, yeah, I mean, collectively, the town would be saving one-point-four million in income tax for giving up our hundred-and-thirty-four and our thirty-three thousand. I mean, I have the numbers of, for example, for Durham, it is close to a hundred and forty thousand on revenue sharing, and there's a one-point-two-million-dollar tax savings that the residents will make, but it doesn't equate one-to-one, there's a ten-to-one save. Well, and that's what he, and he went on to say too, that they were looking at tripling the property tax fairness credit. Yeah, I'm not aware of that, I'm, I'm not aware of that, and, uh.
I, I question, uh, ten, I, I question it if you're, you're saying ninety percent difference and so on, the money's gotta come from somewhere, 'cause we are not reducing services anywhere, the money, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
The question I also have is looking at, at projections where we are a state that demographically is, is aging, one of the fastest, one of the oldest states.
It is the oldest state.
In, in the country, and if we're looking at the homestead exemption doubling for people over sixty-five, looking out in the long term.
Zero income tax.
And zero income tax, I have concerns about the, the longer-term implications of that, if, if we have an aging population that's not paying income taxes anyway, the cost of doubling the home exam, I just, I, I'm not sure how all those numbers equate looking out beyond the immediate near term.
This is, and this is a unique package, it's never been brought forth like this in the fifty years of state history they're talking about, so, and that's what a lot of us are trying to get our hands around right now, because there, on paper, it, it definitely looks good on paper, when you take all of that into account, it, it, it apparently is moving more money into our hands as citizens, and, you know, by, in this, this first year of tax cuts, it would take a congressional, it would take an amendment to our constitution to actually go to zero income tax in Maine. So, that, that would even be another piece that has to be completed, a lot of municipalities like ours, Durham, Powell, we don't have, you know, cities like Portland and Auburn and Lewiston have enough nonprofits, they're, they're gonna be in good shape with something like this, whereas a town like ours, these are the towns that, when I ask the questions, and we've met with the governor twice and talked about this, this, I don't wanna say the subject goes silent, but it's, we'll get back to you, I mean, we, we have an issue here, with towns like ours as a bedroom community.
It basically isn't, isn't most of Maine made up like towns, uh, to, that don't have that, that base, small towns?
There's four-hundred-and-ninety-three communities in the state of Maine, what, some of the differences we have, though, are, we're not parallel, like when you're looking at our RSU unit, you've got Freeport, then Powell, and Durham, so in, in other municipalities, there's a little bit more evenness between the three towns when it comes to spending on schools, for example, we don't have that, we don't have that same parity. So, we, we have kind of a double whammy going on here, we've got, you know, highs, we've got high income taxes, all, high taxes, property taxes because of the situation we're in, so, but there are four-hundred-and-ninety-three communities in Maine, and, you know, I can't imagine that there are maybe more than seventy or so that have a lot of nonprofits where they're sitting uneasy.
And, and what about the potential impact on property taxes of the proposal of flat funding K through twelve education? Which is part of the, the budget, there's some discussion about that, that, that there would be no increases in education, it'll be flat-funded.
I haven't seen that, I, or I haven't gotten into that yet, so.
'Cause that's another piece, that it's one thing to factor in income tax versus property tax, but if, if money to education dries up as well, then that's another impact on property taxes that, that people have, you know, control of.
And these are all, in this budget, what it looks like today is probably nothing like what it's gonna look like in four months, obviously, and it, this, there's a lot of folks, a lot of us, you know, I've read it four times, I've read it four times, I can quote a lot of the numbers, but I still can't tell you what they mean.
I, I actually can't, can't see a huge, that a split legislature will vote for major changes, uh, super-major changes like that.
Well, it's interesting, though, because a lot of the, it's so totally radical, a lot of it is stuff that was originally proposed, but Democrats, some of it is stuff that was originally proposed, I mean, it's one of those budgets that I don't think either side of the aisle is, is dancing over.
It's true, everybody's a little bit confused, because you're absolutely right, there are, there are pieces that were brought forth in twelve ninety-five a few years ago, and it's not completely the same, because now we're talking about decreasing income taxes, and so there's a lot, there's a lot to look at in this.
Yeah, I, I saw sales tax is supposed to go up to six-point-five percent.
It's not gonna sunset, right, so there won't, wouldn't be a sunset to, back to five percent, it would stay at six-point-five percent.
It's five-point-five right now.
It would go to six-point-five, but there would be no sunset, it would eliminate the sunset that was gonna happen in June. Um, lodging taxes would remain at eight percent, there are also, the, the fuel tax hasn't been attached for the last few years, so it would probably include the fuel tax being uh, re-looked at again.
And it also talks about increasing the, the base for the. And it also talks about increasing the, the base for the sales tax, including professional services.
Correct. Yep. Accountants, lawyers.
Which then becomes a, I would imagine to a certain degree, a, a difficult number to quantify and, and collect.
And we had taxation meeting today. We actually had Dr. Mike Allen, who is kind of the architect of this plan. We had him in the room today, this afternoon, and he was, he was actually going through how they model these things. And, and, and you're absolutely right. They have some, they'll use models from other states where they've tried these things. They're taking pieces from different areas and looking to see what the impact would be. But, but there is still a matter of, we're not sure exactly how it's gonna turn out. And we're hearing from a lot of folks. I mean, I'm hearing from a lot of folks that are accountants and lawyers and, you know, that, you know, this is, yeah, this is, where it's gonna keep us busy. There's no question about it. So, and a lot of folks know, you know, the problem is, is that I, I, where the government, the governor is coming from the point that, you know, his, his years as the mayor of Waterville, you know, his point was, "I can find 10% of low hanging fruit anywhere." But soon you get in and you listen to these discussions about whether you're gonna buy tools at 2,000 a year, you know, to, you're trying to save pennies. The reality is, is that there are municipalities like ours that are doing everything they can to try to keep their budgets down. And so, I need more information to understand how this, I would love to see 1.2 million dollars in Durham residents' hands for an income tax. And if, and if that still puts us to the net positive, because the, the reality is, is that that means yes, property tax does get raised because of the loss of that revenue share. So.
If, if I could actually see, you know, if it actually went to zero, uh, pro, uh, income tax went to zero, I could see that this might work. But there again is, is, it, it's gonna, it's definitely gonna hit the older people harder because they don't have income tax.
That's my fear.
Well, and people whose income is so low that they're, they're below the brackets, it's, it's gonna impact the elderly and the poor.
I mean, that's one of those things that's been said is the, the, the property tax and sales tax are the least, what they, least progressive. Taxes are the ones that hit the, the lowest earners the worst. Because in, income tax is typically bracketed and usually below a certain amount. You don't pay anything. Sales taxes, no, you don't have a card to say, "Hey, I, I can't, I can't pay sales tax" or something like that, so.
As a percentage of income spent, lower income people spend a larger percentage of their income on sales tax than, than higher income people.
And the part of the philosophy is that there are folks that don't pay any income tax that do, let's say, things that are under the radar, so to speak. A black market type economy and the consumer tax side actually captures all of those folks as well.
Is there a luxury tax attached to the budget at all?
Not that I recall.
There was some discussion, I think, in the state of the state about yachts or something, that there would be more tax paid on, on people's yachts. But the comment that, or it was, may have been in an article, that, that it went to sales tax and expanding the, the sales base. And the response from the fishing community was, "We, yes, we have expensive boats, but we need them to make a living." And, and if you're adding another six and a half percent on the cost of, of their fishing boats, then it becomes incredibly difficult yet again to, to make a living.
I'm not aware of that, but I'm certainly, again, we're all digging into this, you know, there's a lot of line items in there. There's a lot of line items. And the trust question is a big one. A lot of municipalities are looking to get, I don't know how much tree growth we have here in the town of Durham, but there are municipalities that are saying, "Well, wait a minute then. Let's get these, this property out of tree growth so we can get some property tax back." So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of that type of juxtapositioning going on right now. And I certainly, I don't have any answers and I don't think anybody really does just yet, you know. So, this is, you know, we're gonna be knocking these things off one piece at a time, but.
I suspect when it finally comes to vote, it will be a different animal.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be.
The hearings are two weeks, one week? I, I got an email that they are coming up shortly.
There's some next week that, that pertain to some of the issues that.
Yeah, we're gonna, and it's, and the governor is gonna go on a road show and, and go to different municipalities. They're gonna go to Westford Performing Arts sometime, if, if not this week, next week. But we've kind of encouraged the administration to get out there and say, "Well, if you're gonna talk to people about this, then we need to get out."
They're more than welcome to come here to talk to us. We're, we're a small town, but, I mean, we may, small towns make up a.
That's been, that's been, that's been suggested, so, because, you know, obviously, it's, we're in a different scenario than a lot of the, the major municipalities. So, again, it, it, it does look good on paper, but there's a lot of moving parts in there.
And, and we, I've seen this type of thing happen before where they cut what they're giving, but then when it comes to actually cutting the taxes somewhere, oh, oh, we can't do that. So, so you, you, you get the reduction in, in the money coming into the town, but then the, the residents don't see anything coming back to them.
And we have to, you know, we have to watch out for the unfunded mandates and things like that that still slide in the back doors, so. But I certainly, I just wanted to make sure that I introduced myself and got to talk to you folks and.
Feel free to come any, at any of our meetings and we'll.
Thank you.
We know you've got a lot of spare time.
Yes.
I, I certainly appreciate it. And, and obviously, please keep in touch with me if there's anything that I can do or, you know, any concerns from the town perspective, I certainly wanna hear. So, I'll just.
Do you, do you work with Dale much? The Senator, our Senator, Dale Craft?
Oh, you mean Garrett. Garrett, Garrett.
I'm sorry, Garrett Mason, yes. So, if you.
I do work with Dale too. Dale is Lisbon though.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Uh, we would be more than happy to see Garrett if he has the opportunity.
Okay, we'll try to set up a, a point that we could, you know, come and visit.
And have you proposed any bills for this session?
I did, but I, you know, I'm a freshman. I'm a rookie. I, you know, I honestly didn't. There are some people that throw bills just for the sake of saying, "I put a bill in." I, I did not. I put in two bills. One is for hunting on Sundays. I know it's a perennial favorite that always gets shot down. But that to me is a low hanging fruit in the state of Maine. You know, you have to hunt on somebody's property with permission as it is now. And I know a lot of landowners are against Sunday hunting. If that's the case, then have that conversation with the people that hunt there. But my, I, I recommended it for wildlife management districts, districts that have less than a population of 50,000 people. So, that would be nowhere around here. It wouldn't be southern Maine. It would be mostly northern Maine, western foothills as a study with a two-year look back. So, do it for two years until 2017. Measure to see if there's an increase in licenses sold. See if there's an increase in hotel lodgings. Cause what I wanna see is that on Veterans Day weekends and things like that, that where Veterans Day is on Monday or Tuesday, I would expect to see people staying longer through the weekends. I also know people, friends of mine, I hunt as well, and I see them go to Pennsylvania. Boy, that, that bothers me to see our own people in state go to other states to hunt because they can get a full weekend, so.
Why would you go there? Their deer are tiny.
Yeah, but plentiful.
That's, that's the thing.
Yes, they're plentiful, but they're tiny.
Using it, and they just run a couple over.
All you have to do is go outside and you'll see a deer.
So, it's, it's interesting. So, I, I, but you know, this year, I mean, we'll see what happens with this two-year term I'm in. I, I hope that from a voting perspective, I can do what's right for our citizens. I did not get into this because I was looking for something else to do. I was, I already work a 55, 60-hour week for work and, but I'm, just like every other resident, seeing our taxes go out of control. We know that local government is trying the best that they can to keep things under control. So, there has to be another piece to this puzzle that we have to look at. And so, those are the things that I'm in for and, and that's, you know, so, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm hoping to get in there and that's why I wanna hear everybody's opinion and good, bad, or indifferent. I've got thick skin, you know, I don't, I just wanna do what, what I, what I can for our town. So, that's why I'm doing this, because I, I wanna live in Maine. I wanna retire in Maine. I don't wanna see the drain, so.
Thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. Thank you, folks.
You'll be able to wrap this up by eight. I got snow blowing to do.
Snowblowing?
Snowblowing.
Oh.
You know, I gotta say. Oh, fire. Gotcha. I feel like the guys have done an alright job. I certainly don't feel like our roads have been where they, where they were when my cop was doing them. But, you know, in fairness, when my cop was doing them, we had the best roads anywhere, you know. And, and, and to defend our guys, I could say I, I have not, I drive, commute to Augusta and I, I don't typically go through towns that are better, but I still am thinking that they're not, you know, I agree. They're not what they were when Mike, when, yeah.
Sean, don't take criticism too good.
Well.
Some improvement you don't understand.
Sure, sure.
Create a criticism while I was, my boss was just gonna tell me, "Mike, this is, this and this is happening." I said, "All right. Create a criticism, Mike."
You know, I was, I, I wasn't a big fan of the brine idea upfront, you know. And I, I've been vocal about that all along. And I've known people complain about the brine, but.
I told Sean, I said, "I won't praise you for doing your job. I'll praise you for doing a good job."
Right.
I think he's just doing his job right now.
You know, this year I've had, I've had a lot of slipping and sliding on the roads and I realize we've been pounded. It's, it's, you know, I, I don't know that we had any big storms like this over the past few years, but. We, yeah, and.
Get some nice equipment. I guess some nice equipment.
That's a, you know, I, I certainly can't, I think they've done pretty well.
They're as, as good, in my opinion. At least, they, they seem to be as good, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not, I don't blow wind up anybody's skirt because I don't need to.
Sure.
But I don't, I mean, I've heard a couple of mine complaints. But one of the things I've learned about complaints is I gotta remember where they come from.
Well, that's it, you know.
And why. Sometimes it's personal reasons, so.
For me, like I say, I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that I, I do see the difference, you know.
So, Josh, you should have several copies there.
Several copies of fire.
Yeah, you should take one and get.
Don't get them all, do you?
That's an updated one from the last time we talked about fires.
Is that something new again? Oh, I didn't, that's one I could find.
Another couple trees or so.
Yeah.
You know, I know, I need to, I have been very good about weeding out the old ones and I need.
Actually, I, I leave them, I leave them in because when we go to the budget committee, it's nice to be able to go flip back. So, when we. What was, can you highlight the change? Is this just the changes we made or were there more changes?
No, this is the changes that you made. There's only two. If we factor out the, moving the workers' comp, workers' comp got moved over and that's, that's at like 11, 11.5. So, we're still at about a $20,000 increase from last year.
Yeah, and I mean, 12,000 of that is the labor line. Just, 12,000 just in labor because, um, well, la, last year was a big year for labor. And this year's starting off just as biggies, as we were in before that.
Today was 50, which is ahead of last year.
50 calls in 40 days, something like that. And the equipment and maintenance one you said was due, due to the extra, like the required testing and stuff on the.
Yeah, it does a, the change in the equipment maintenance is primarily focused on adding the ladder truck. We'll throw the breakdown on it if you'd like.
That's all right.
I think they all have your company too. They should have it up here. And we've been through it once. It's just a.
We, I mean, we went, we went through quickly and we didn't, uh, we, we did the two lines. It's, it is a hefty increase, but I, the, the two, 18,000 of it is, is the, uh, the labor, or I should say 15, 15,000 is the labor for the, for the firefighters and the workers' comp and the Medicare, FICA, all that, all those increases. There's another 2, 2,700 plus a little bit for the chief's salary increase.
Actually 2,800 for the.
2,711 plus some.
Yeah, the, the 15,170 plus the 13,142 for the lower support benefits. Those are increases.
Yeah, the, the, I was taking out the chief's one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so. So, it's about 15, about 15,000 for just firefighter labor stuff. There's not, I don't see a lot in there that could.
Does the, and I'm sure that we discussed this and I apologize for not remembering. I've just looked at a lot of numbers. Does the labor line, setting aside the chief's salary, does, just the, the labor line, I know it includes increasing hours, about five hours a week per part-time person.
Four hours.
Four hours a week per part-time person. And then does it also include a raise for the labor?
It doesn't necessarily, it, what it does is if you look at the cover sheet, I think I passed it last time around. It brings the base rates up to what I had asked to bring them up to.
It raises.
No, I meant for the part-time people, the, the part-time people in the station.
It doesn't necessarily incorporate a guaranteed 3% increase or anything like that.
Okay, they're paid according to the same rate.
I increased it so that they're, the ceiling, because I have a bunch of people that are bunched up at the ceiling. And I increased, changed it so the ceiling was actually higher, both for the part-time workers and for the volunteer people. I said a bunch. There's a few people that are bunched up there. Once they get so high, they can't go any higher. I increased it on the high end, on both of them. It, but the base end of it is the same as it was before.
You only added one hour per week to each, right? You added or?
One hour. They cover on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay.
We have the part-timers there. One hour, there's six-hour days and I increased the days to seven.
Okay, so three hours each, okay.
Four hours each person.
Monday.
Four hours for a total. Diana works three of the days.
Oh, okay, so they don't all work, they don't, each works.
Would increase three hours.
Yeah.
And Drew works all of the days, so this would increase one hour.
Okay, so it's.
Seven-hour days instead of six-hour days.
So, there's coverage in the station, four days a week?
Yeah, Monday, Monday I'm solo.
Yeah.
I actually looked at trying to bring somebody in on Monday because it makes it difficult to do anything administrative on Monday when I'm there. Like today, between going on calls and doing the shoveling and stuff, that was half, two thirds of my day. So, I don't do a lot of administrative stuff on Monday, but it would have required it, either it would have been a really short day, which nobody's gonna want a really short day as it is. It makes it a struggle with just six hours to put it out to people because, you know. Hourly rates were getting so that they're close to being what the industry standard would be. But it, it's only for six hours, whereas most people are putting out eight, 10, or 12 hours for time, so. I decided it'd be better to stick it out solo and try to get the four days we do cover up. So, it was a realistic number of hours making it worthwhile for people.
Anybody have any proposals for this or do we leave it as is? Other than, other than this chief's salary, because we haven't, we haven't looked at that yet.
Raises in any department across the board.
Equipment maintenance, we had that up a little bit more than normal because we respected more equipment maintenance line.
Equipment maintenance?
Yeah, the 25.
Equipment maintenance with the addition of the ladder truck, some have been marketing right along. And they, they basically tell you your maintenance is gonna increase by like 3,000 to 5,000 dollars for, when you add a ladder truck on that. Testing of ladders, I think it was either 600 or 700 off the top of my head. It goes up to like 16, 1700.
We just had a lot of work done on that, on that piece of equipment, correct?
Yeah, but you're still gonna have your regular pump maintenance. You're gonna now have ladder maintenance, ladder testing that you're gonna have to do, so.
Is all that, is that annual or the ladder testing and the pump, do you do that once a year, twice a year?
They have to have all the ladders in the department tested annually.
I didn't know if it was twice a year, once a year, what the, what the protocol is.
No matter how many times, even if they don't come off the truck. It actually, it's about a labor, we have to, they actually got after me about step ladders. And I learned a lot about step ladders. Step ladders, UL does not test step ladders. No testing agency does. They do initially, but not after the fact, so they got after me about it, but we have to do it in-house.
Climb up and jump.
That's what I was wondering.
I got monthly inspections on my ladders at work.
Well, I didn't know if it was once a year, month, once a month, twice a year, I just didn't remember.
Yeah, I don't think actually industry has to do inspections, you, you don't have to do them, it means either.
No, we, we generally inspect the equipment each time we need to use it to make sure that there's an issue.
An in-house inspection.
Or, no, no, if there's an issue, you take it out of service.
On outside certification, yeah, not, have to have an outside testing agency come in and, and do a certification on it, it's actually unreal, watch the tests they do.
Yeah, but if you're up on that ladder fighting a fire, you're very happy that it's been tested, I would imagine.
Well, there are a few guys that are into thrill-seeking, but for the most part, most of the guys down there, we, uh, if it ain't safe, they're not gonna use it, I mean, they don't really wanna, they, they do wanna go home, it's as good a shape as when they came in, so.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't fall in love.
Not a bad thing, but I have some that are sticklers to that, and that's not a bad thing.
No.
Can rub me once in a while, but I have some of them that are sticklers.
And there's not a lot of each.
No, mama, look over.
We talked about the, the needing to, to upgrade some of the personal safety equipment.
The what?
The personal safety line is, is an increase, but we talked at the last meeting about the fact that some of that stuff just has to be placed.
Some of the personal safety line too, it, uh, I think that's the one that's in.
You gotta have the right equipment to keep.
Before I say something that's incorrect, let me just double check and make sure, but, uh.
You're frowning, Josh.
I'm going back, looking at my breakdown and stuff, the one change that's beyond just normal increases is the uniforms are listed there, that's something we talked when we met back a long ago.
Right, exactly.
The uniforms are listed in the personal safety, the two big things that are kind of a change for the way we, uh, two bigger things is the uniforms and the printing and distribution of the handbook. The four-hours addition of time is probably the next step in, in changes in the way do we do business or service, that would probably be the next thing or the third thing that I could say. Now, I'd, uh, I'll throw this out there, we've thrown it out there before, and nobody likes the idea, and I'm not sure I'm crazy about it, but one of the things we do that's actually a, a thorn in everybody's side is, that, that has to do it, is, uh, the coverage at two hours on Saturday and Sunday on the weekends for permits and stuff. That's the, you know, they tend to try to do some other stuff sometimes if they can while they're there covering, but it, uh, you know, we bring somebody in from nine to eleven on Saturday, nine to eleven on Saturday, uh, Sunday, but, uh. I don't think it's worthwhile. Sometimes it's gone through a electronic system, so you have to pay, you pay for, and they set it up, and it, but you have to submit electronically. You lose a seven-dollar fee, I don't believe there's any fee for doing it, but people have to be able to do it electronically, and it's always been a case whenever we've discussed it, that, uh, do it, didn't wanna make it all electronic.
Right, and you can now, you can go on.
Yeah, I've gotten burn permits right online.
With that?
I've gotten burn permits right online.
You paid seven bucks, but.
Yeah, probably so, I don't remember, but.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess that's one thing I'll throw out there, that I, none of my offices are crazy about it, they don't mind the coverage, but that means that from nine to eleven, which is right in the middle of the morning, they have to come down to, come down or find somebody to come down to the station to write permits from nine to eleven.
And that is kind of a crappy time to pull somebody out of what they've done, started.
Yeah, well, we can't really, I try to keep it, most people wanna start early.
Yeah.
But I can't start any earlier than they post class days, and, um, the general rule, sometimes they're posted by eight-thirty, but that's about the earliest they're ever posted, eight, eight-thirty, somewhere in there, and it's not guaranteed, they pretty much guarantee nine. But that costs us, uh, you know, averaging it out, probably a good way to average it out would be it costs us forty dollars a weekend to, to do that, have somebody there for permits, but, uh.
This time of year, especially with three feet of snow.
They don't write any.
I wouldn't imagine.
At, uh, springtime?
And we don't charge for the permits, right?
No, we can't charge for the state permit, state can, but we can't.
Well, that's what's gonna be my next question, is can we just pack like a two-dollar charge on it to cover the cost of the time that's there to.
We can't charge for permits, going back in time, one of the things I did was, when we used to have incinerators in town, it, uh, I could charge for the inspection process and the recording process, but I couldn't actually charge for the permit. So we established an inspection process and a record-keeping process for the incinerator permits, and we were actually doing it anyhow, but, and so we started charging a fee for it, we could do that, but. One of the things in the research end, unless the laws have changed, going back in time, we couldn't charge for the state permits.
I just, I know that the state charges online, that's why I was wondering.
And originally, some of that was supposed to come back to the municipality, but that changed a long time.
Yeah, you're the guys that are gonna come running if something goes wrong, yeah.
We have a state cobb stuff in, but.
So, you said I was frowning, I'm, I'm, numbers aren't adding up to me on something, and I'm trying to figure out why.
Okay.
Okay, workers' compensation, uh, last year it was all under administration, we spent twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-six. This year, you've split it out into fire and public works, public works is twenty-one thousand, fire is eleven thousand, and you've got sixteen hundred here, which is thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars, which is almost three times as much for workers' comp.
So, so that eleven thousand four eighty-eight is based off of the fire department lines on the actual bill, which is included in the administration section. The, the amount that is included in the administrative section, session, if you look, um, all right, if you look on the administrative session, section. There is, no, that's animal control, that's not gonna help me, all right, there's a Bangor Daily News article, and then right after that, you'll find a Maine Municipal Association Workers' Compensation Fund, that's the actual bill for this year.
Nope.
And you'll look on the back, it has the actual amounts of the payroll, estimated payroll, the rates that are charged, and then it, it has the amounts that, that they're charging. So, I didn't figure out payroll for this for fire or for the offices, so the fire and the offices come directly off of this bill, but for the roads, the roads is significantly underestimated, according to our estimations, so I.
Because when it was done last, we hired, we started the public works department in May, so it was all summer payroll.
E- even for what we paid last year, we're underestimated, so I, I actually included an extra eleven hundred dollars to cover the audit that's gonna come up, and we're gonna be under, uh, we're gonna be over what they had estimated us as having payroll. And what we're billed for is under what we're estimating our payrolls, does that make sense? As your payroll goes up, your cost increases for workers' compensation.
So what we spent last year, the twelve thousand five hundred was actually based on two thousand thirteen's payroll? Cause.
Or, no, no, it was, it was based on an ex, a guesstimate that I think Janet had come up with, so it's, it's split out in summer and winter roads. The summer roads is estimated to have a payroll of seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-two, right? Do you see that on the bill? Okay, the winter roads is estimated to have a payroll of forty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-two, if you add those two together, let's see if I can get my math right, you're up to a hundred and twenty thousand, right, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for payroll, am I?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty, something like that.
And we're estimating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with payroll, so that means that when they audit us, our workers' compensation is going to be significantly.
I, I realize that, but three ti- we paid, we actually spent last year twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-six, last year we spent twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, and this year we're projecting to spend thirty-one, thirty-three thousand, that's, that's why I'm.
I think that's gonna factor in the likelihood that we're gonna get tagged for, for being so under what we were.
But she, she, you said you, you've pu- put in eleven hundred for the last.
For this last year.
Yeah.
Cause we were under last year, and when I, I figure out the numbers for the winter and the summer roads that we were under last year, I come up with a figure of eleven hundred dollars is what we're gonna get tagged for in the audit. I mean, we don't have to put the extra in.
No, no, I'm just trying.
You made up for it in two thousand sixteen.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to figure.
Like, three times.
Why, I, I mean.
If you, if you look, go look at the roads page.
It would be unusual, the fact that we were a hundred percent off on our payroll estimate seems to be.
Cause we spent, uh, that's what I'm trying to figure out, eve- cause even with this, even with, I did, I did, I mean, you said the rates increased ten percent too?
No, this isn't where the rates increased.
Okay.
Okay, so if you look at.
I, I don't wanna interfere though, but are we all set with the chief?
I'm sorry, yeah.
We're getting palatable.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the only, the only other thing is, is, do you wanna look at capital projects? He, he put in for fifty thousand this year, do we wanna keep it at the fifty thousand, or do we wanna look at that? Um, we, it was thirty-five last year, he asked for forty last year, it was cut back to thirty-five, um.
He's gonna say sixty.
We all, we're cutting everywhere we can, you understand that, you heard that, you understand where we're all coming from, you willing to take some hits for us, or are we gonna have to do it for you, or?
You understand what I'm trying to say here?
I'm gonna volunteer to do it, yeah, I actually readjusted the capital thing too, based on some of our conversation, but I, I didn't change the amount of money going in.
He did readjust looking out, um, instead of, instead of, uh, looking to do another engine next year, he pushed it out for another year, and pulled the paving in, there were two years of twenty thousand, uh, starting two years from now. He pulled that into next year, all of it in one year, forty thousand, and so, so it, for next year, it changed it by twenty thousand, dropped it by twenty thousand, and pushed the engine out one year.
I actually spread it out. I actually spread it out to two thousand and thirty, and actually, it, it came out better, even in.
That's gonna be a touchy subject, the fire department got a paving job in the roads then, that's gonna be a touchy subject. You know, why don't you wait till that happens? Hey, we didn't touch any of the roads, but the fire department got a brand-new foot.
Yeah.
We can reimburse for the.
There's two hundred and twenty-five thousand in the public works budget for paving.
We can reimburse for that.
Well, it's not gonna be a reconstruct though.
I'm just curious, it says, uh.
In a manner of speaking, yes, but, but you're talking about where we pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we pay a variety of different fees, if one service doesn't charge us, I think one, the top service charges us like forty, something like that. As far as being reimbursed in a manner of speaking, yes, we do, when we bill, we bill for a transport at a paramedic level, and for paramedic interventions, um, but as far as actually getting, okay, so-and-so billed you backs for that. On the low end, we're probably doing okay, on the high end, we're getting just gone, especially depending on the type of insurance people have, the bottom line is, depending on the type of insurance people have, we may not even be getting paid what the innocent costs the town are doing, and, uh. Any revenues that we generate from transports go into the capital account, that's the.
Okay, that's what.
MS revenues you see, so in a manner of speaking, yeah, we, we do.
It's not a, it's not a wash.
Reimbursed for the full amount, no, the, yeah, it's kind of a, no, the high-end ones, I'd be willing to bet if I actually followed it, we're not getting completely reimbursed once we take our, our expenses and stuff for what it's costing, especially depending on what the people have for insurance. I don't wanna categorize people with their insurance and stuff, but some insurances.
Cover more than others.
Actually pay.
Yeah.
Pay virtually nothing, and just get away with it.
So, so that fifty, and was that thirty you said? Uh, is that fifty thousand you said?
Yeah, it's fifty thousand, we did thirty-five last year, plus there was, last year there's approximately, what, somewhere around five thousand from the budget that was turned in to, that.
Yeah, last year we had a surplus.
This year, there's no surplus, eighteen bucks, um, and, um, the, the, the fifty thousand is to try to keep on track with the plan, and.
What's that you're saying?
Yeah, he's asking, he's actually looking ahead, next year, I think it was sixty for next, or fifty-five for next year.
Yeah, it actually, what the plan does is it went forty, fifty, sixty next year, and then after that, it went up in five thousand dollar increments until it got to the hundred thousand dollar mark, and then actually, that one I submitted, it goes up to two thousand and thirty, I think around twenty-two or something like that, we hit that one hundred thousand dollar mark, and it kinda stabilized and stayed there. I actually think at, at that transitional point, uh, I gotta tell you something, but anyways, at that transitional point, I think the town has an option of deciding, well, do we keep trying to increase this five thousand and make it so that we don't have to finance as much? I, I think we kinda went, the first transition was kind of rushed and tight, the second transition is starting to even out a little, and we'll be towards the end of that second transition of replacement, of the having the capital plan and the replacement schedule and stuff like that. And I think by then, we're getting to a point where now we can make a decision, do we actually try to have money ahead so that we can pay for some of the smaller items, or, rather than financing them, you know, so, but I left it at a hundred thousand, and rather than continuing to increase it, cause, so that you could see where we're at, cause you can actually, you got one or two tough years, and then you can actually ride on that hundred thousand for a claywork zone. Two thousand and thirty, we're still riding on that hundred thousand, but not how I do it, but that's how I put it down, so.
I gotta think about this year.
Yeah.
When that's due, when we're finished with this, do we wanna think about putting money aside for, to start building a capital fund for the public works equipment?
I, I think we're gonna have to start thinking about that, cause we've got four pieces, five pieces of relatively old equipment that are gonna have to be replaced over the next few years.
Yeah.
And we knew that going into it, um, but. Right. Alright, so, what, does the board want to do anything on the capital projects, or leave it as is?
I think we leave it, let, let the budget committee have something to do.
It's gonna get, I already know that, it's gonna get, it's gonna get nibbled down.
Oh, yeah.
You know damn well that they're, that's where they're gonna hit, you know, so if we don't hit it now, then maybe they won't hit it too hard, you know?
Yeah, well, maybe they will.
Okay, alright, so. But, so basically, as far as going back to the workers' comp on, uh, these are based on the actual.
Yeah, I think you're done with it.
Yeah, I think we're done.
Thank you, I see you.
Uh, they're based on the actual, uh, dumb, the factors.
Right, now, if you wanted to, I mean, we could just take what we're actually physically billed and pay that this year and meet for the audit next year, it, it'll catch up to us. Or I can call them up and say, hey, look, we, we've redone our estimates, and this is what.
I mean, I think, I think we're probably better off just going ahead and biting the bullet, cause next year we're gonna have to do the same, we're probably gonna have to do the same thing, and so we're, we're gonna be behind by ten thousand dollars next year, and so we're gonna have to put in, the ten thousand plus another ten thousand in for it, so. I think might as well just go with what, what, if we know, and if we don't spend all the, uh, all the sa- all the labor line in there, then we can, uh, get a refund or get a credit applied.
Right.
Right, if we overpay, we get it back.
Yes.
Alright.
The big thing is raises.
Raises, yes, and we do have a sheet here, um, one thing that's not on, I don't, okay, there's a sheet, what's not on here as far as, um, as employees, is we don't have the, any of the roads crew on here.
No, I didn't.
And.
But their pay is reflected in, in my figuring, so.
Right, but that was, that was a flat rate.
And if I could be just devil's advocate for a moment.
Sure.
Just for the purposes of discussion. The roads crew who's worked for us for less than a year, so, are we looking at giving them raises when we've employed them for less than a year?
Most of them will be almost a year by, by the time we get to, uh, we, we hired in, we hired in, uh, April, they started work in May, so.
In May, but are these raises retroactive to January?
No, no, no.
They, they just go from.
None, none of the raises here are retroactive, the only, the only one that's kind of retroactive is, is, it wasn't retroactive, but, cause we just gave you the raise, so that goes back to February.
No, that's the question too, would chiefs be retroactive?
No.
Okay.
Chiefs would be, uh, the raises all take effect after the town meeting.
Okay, so even if he gets the raise that he's asking for, I think his figure's a little inflated then because of the time difference, you know, the fourteen weeks is at the old rate, and then there's, I guess, twenty-eight weeks at the new rate.
Right, so. And so, when we're thinking about this, I mean, do you want to look at the roads crew separately from all the others, or do you wanna have the roads crew included in the, in the pool, in the overall pool, and figure out from there? How do we want? How do we wanna do that?
Well, let's see, going forward, I think we should have everybody in the pool. I'm not really sure of the roads crew this year, cause it's a timing thing.
The tough part of that is, is you've got, you know, if, if you've got everybody in the same pool, how, how does the fire chief, I mean, there would have to be some pretty good communication there between the fire chief and the road commissioner about how to divvy that up.
No, 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 we divvy it up.
So we would divvy it up.
We, we take a pool, we say, uh-
But how would we divvy it up? We don't do these people's reviews?
Yes, we do, we do some of them, and we have all of the reviews.
Yeah.
We, so we do the fire chief's review. We, we haven't done the road commissioners, but we will start doing it.
We do their review.
We do-
We don't do their laborers.
No, but, uh, so, the chief put in what he wants for his labor.
I ran out tonight.
As far as the, as far as like the road crew, Sean did their reviews, but we have them right here. We can go look at them, so we can, we can base our-
And we did give one member of the roads crew a raise already this year.
Yes, the ninety day review, and we gave him a raise.
Yeah.
And, um-
Do we give anybody else raises at their ninety day review, or just-
I don't, I don't believe so, because several of them we hired at the top of our pay scale.
Right.
Yeah, he was particularly low, I think, and that's why we gave, that's why we gave him a raise.
Very bottom of our pay scale.
Yeah.
So, um, so basically, if you include them, we take whatever we decide for a percentage, and we look at all the salaries there, and we say, okay, we have this much, if we choose two percent, okay, two percent of all these salaries, this is how much of a pool we have to work with. And we say, okay, we'll give this much to this one, this much to that one.
Last year, we gave that discretion to the chief, so you're saying this year, we would not give that discretion?
Well, the chief, the chief is actually not asking for any quote, raise. Uh, the only thing he's asking is to move, to hi- raise the ceiling. And, and everything on that is based on a step and, a step and years scale, basically. And, and if you've maxed out, you're, you know, you, you get up to a certain point, you may have a couple more steps or a couple more certifications or something like that, but you can't move because you're at the ceiling.
The biggest pieces for the chief's labor, the pieces in the chief's labor, his request for five percent and increasing the part-time hours.
Yeah, he's, yes, he's asked to increase the part-time out, four hours a week total. Um, which was six times, six times twenty-four, so four hours a week is eighteen percent.
So- We're gonna have a hard time giving the chief five percent, even if you just raise him that bar, when everybody else is asking for less than that.
Oh, I, I, well, you heard me say it to him when he was here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, five, it's, that's-
Wish I could get a five percent, I, I watch, I watch it every day.
Um, and that was, so, that's where the, the budget committee, um, came down on the selectmen several years, because they were, they put in three percent, three percent, three percent, and it was like, and the budget committee was right, is, um, it seems like you think that's an entitlement.
Right.
Uh, three percent every year. Um, and so, we, 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 they, uh, then, we put in zero percent some years because it was bad, or we did a one and a half percent, well, why are you doing a flat? And so, that's why we did, and we really confused them last year when we did it, and-
We did a pool, and they were like-
And I, I have a, I have an idea of how we can, how we can have a sheet that shows it better, so they know where, cause if you're pooling from different lines, um, and then they say, well, we don't want you to do a one, uh, we don't want you to do a two percent, we want you to do a one percent pool. And then they start cutting the money from everywhere, and all of a sudden, you don't have enough to give a one percent pool. So, um, so I guess that's, do we wanna do it by, cause right now, it's almost kind of by department. We've got the administration department, we've got the fire department, and we've got the, um, roads. And we can do a pool for each department, or we can do an overall pool. The overall pool allows you to reward one, uh, reward somebody a little bit better, cause you've got a little bit more, and then somebody else may not get as much. The, the, uh, doing a pool for each department is a lot easier to explain.
Let's do that, keep it simple.
And when we look at the pool for public works, we just look at their base pay, we don't factor in overtime when we're taking our percentage, correct?
Correct.
We don't, we factor in, it's a percentage of base pay, it's not a percentage of total payroll, correct?
Right, we, 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 we just, yeah. Um, it ends up being factored in, because you have to, you, you have to calculate whatever you give as a raise across all the overtime that you're projecting, but yeah.
Why is it, why is it harder to understand if you have a pool for all the departments as opposed to a pool for separate departments?
Because they, they, last year, when we went through this, um, they didn't necessarily like the number we chose. And they tried to, they tried to put it in, and they ended up double cutting, cause they cut, they cut everything out of adminis- uh, so they said, okay, we're gonna cut it from a two to a one percent. And they took all that money out of administration, and then they went over to fire and took it out of fire again.
But they cut the pool, and then they cut individual salaries as well, so it ended up being-
Yeah.
How can-
It, it, yeah, it was, yeah, it was, it was, to me-
Well, I think sometimes the budget committee has some good ideas and good thoughts, so we should listen to them, but it's almost sound like we're gonna take direction from them, and I don't think that's the decision.
No, 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 that's not the, the issue was, we tried to-
That was not how it was resolved.
We tried to explain to them that, well, you were, you're trying to do this, but you ended up cutting from, you ended up cutting the whole chunk from here, and then you cut some more of it from over here, and then you did some more of it over here. And so, you're not doing what you're actually saying you're trying to do.
And we were able to resolve that ultimately.
But-
I guess that would fall back to my comment I've made a couple times, that the budget committee needs to meet with the selectmen at least three, if not four, times a year on the budget quarterly, so that we don't have that issue come the end of the year. And they only meet once, and try to chunk it all up, they can actually see what's going on over the co- and I know that may be hard to do, but we need to look at that, just keep that on the top of our heads.
And just, what was the percentage that you put in?
Three.
Okay. The initial one said two, I think, right?
Nope, nope, it's always been.
Okay.
I, I think at one point, it was a-
I thought the first one I saw said-
Yeah, at one point, there was two, I think.
Go with two, well, I was gonna say, go with two.
Um, I think, if you look at COLA, I think that was one, one point something.
Point three, four.
One point three, four, so two is ahead of COLA.
I go two.
Um, I'd, I'd love to be able to give three, but, so, if we go for a two pool, and the only, so, let's see, what is, uh, Jill has specifically requested fifteen fifty, correct?
Yeah.
Which is a little over three percent.
Three point three percent.
A two would be fifteen thirty, um, I'm not, I'll have to look. And we have to be careful at this point, um, if, if we're going to specifically talk, um, reviews, we need to go into executive session. If we're, if we're not gonna specifically talk about specific reviews, we don't.
Do we need to, um, do we need to specifically put down who's gonna get what amount at this point? Or do we just need to go with the percentage of the pool? And I, I understand we need to know roughly what we're gonna give somebody, so we make sure we got a match of the pool, but-
Right, but we don't have to decide who's getting what right now.
We, we could do that, and just, um-
If we're gonna take all the salaries-
If we do that, I would suggest that we add a line to administration expense, to each of the expenses, and say, um, call it, uh, merit rev- or merit raise, or call it something like that, and bunch it all in that line, and then leave the other salary lines flat.
Except that, the problem we run into with that is that it changes everything else, it changes the, the-
But that's all, but that's all still, you just include that into the pers calculation, cause it's all still in the same bud, same line. I think, I think you can still do that.
So same form work.
And, so then we could, um, and then we don't actually have to, when it, when it come, when April comes, we can actually go into executive session and just determine the, the specific raises.
Right.
And, so, what was the, uh, you said, uh, the roads one was on three percent too, right? So, so that should actually cut a little out of that.
Yep, I don't think you need to separate them into departments either, I mean, if we get a pool, I mean, we can get a pool.
Well, we, we need to, we, we need to have it in the departments, because it's going to ta- the money's gonna come out of that department when we start paying it.
Yeah.
So, so you need to have that pool, each pool, and-
Gotcha.
That much is understandable.
Yeah.
For me, I'll be honest.
I'm over here, my wife's actually running for a seat on that board, so, and she's actually an accountant, so she, these things make very much sense to her.
So, and I think that would, I think that would help, um, rather-
My husband's not running again.
Oh, he's not?
He is not.
Okay.
We had that question, we were wondering.
Go ahead, dude.
But I think that would help simplify it for the budget committee as well. They can look at that one line and change that one line, and-
Sure.
So, and then next year, when we come back-
You just assume they're gonna change that one line.
That, when, when we come back, that line will actually be expended zero, and the, the difference will be in the, in the salary line, so.
Got it.
So, are we gonna put John in with the office people?
Um, John's will need to go into the telecommunications budget.
Okay.
Because, and, and Jill's will have to go into each of her.
Right.
And, and, um, I guess we need to, we need to decide whether we're going to give her her requested amount or not.
I think if we're doing a two percent pool, I think it has to be-
Yep, all the way around.
Form across the board, I think, just because she requested something separate.
I would agree with that, she requested more too, when he, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we have to be, treat everybody equally.
And we're, it's not that far off.
That's right.
Okay, so that actually makes that, um, that calculation a lot easier. For budget packets, if we can get that into a spreadsheet, what I have up on there or something, um, it's not, it's not a hundred percent. I, in fact, I know the workers' comp isn't, because we didn't, obviously, we didn't spend eighteen thousand this, this last year, but it, it would have been probably fairly, it would probably been eleven, twelve thousand if we'd actually paid for it last year.
Right.
So. Um, anything else we need to, do we need to go through anything more? Or should we wait till tomorrow when we can see, when, cause we did cut a little bit, um-
Right, we should have final numbers to vote on each one tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, we, and we should be able to vote on each one by just going down through this, uh, kinda, kinda going down through that, um.
So, on the pool thing, did you wanna take the total of, like, all the salaries, multiply it by two percent, and then divvy it up, depending on who you want, I mean, who, depending on the, the reviews?
We'll, we'll divvy it up, um, in April if it passes, basically. We'll have an executive session to do the divvying up. Don't include yours, make sure you, you-
Right, no, no.
You put yours exactly the way it's gonna be, cause we've already given you the raise.
Right, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna include Pam, Shannon, Bree, and Jill in the office, the administration. And then Jill will be in planning board and telecom also, and Bree will also be in, um, Eureka.
Eureka, yeah.
Okay.
And, and if we decide to give a little bit, it's, it won't, it won't throw off the budget that much if we decide to give a little bit more to, like, Bree, or we decide to give a little bit more to, you know, when looking at it, we decide to give a little bit more to Jill. It'll, it'll, it, the actual amount that it will change, that will be, you know, a few dollar, yeah, maybe a hundred dollars or something like that, it's not gonna blow the budget.
Okay. Yeah, no.
No, we've already done that.
Yeah.
It's one of those things that was surprising to me when I first became a selectman, cause I, I may never be friends on property taxes, it's the nature of these, is how tight this budget is. I, I don't think that there's a lot of strenuous spending, for all people talk about, you know, public spending and-
I just say, like I said about the paving, fire station, we gotta get something done on the roads, cause if we pave that fire station, and the roads, none of the roads get touched, holy, I'm gonna hear it from every side in.
The problem is the roads haven't been done for quite a while, because of the situation we've been in.
Absolutely, I understand that, but you know what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I, oh, I agree, I do agree.
They get a nice little paved job over there, and I always get that.
Yeah, the road fix this year.
I'm gonna hear it.
Save the bottle drive or whatever.
I mean, not that he doesn't deserve to get the, the other layman gun over there, don't get me wrong.
I know that there was a couple spots that Sean tried to do that, that where he did it with the grader, and I'm glad he did, because there was a couple spots, like, it did, it did help, you know? There was a spot on the Boy Hill Road that he wasn't gonna do, and then he tried that, and there was that one on the deer, so that, that rut, where that rotor sucker was, I mean, low cars, if I ever gone down there with my man, I, I would've took the whole model of that right up, you know, I mean, just, just, so.
Yeah, if, if you can give us our final numbers tomorrow, and maybe, I mean, if, maybe the budget committee will come, cause we're still gonna be about a five point three, five point four percent increase, even with what we cut tonight.
Yeah, that's completely all.
Um, does, John, did you have to talk about telecom?
Okay.
Cut it off.
How do you turn that thing off?
Hey, I didn't touch it. Uh-oh, let me, let me in trouble.
You should've shown me.
As soon as you just pull the plug, you're just gonna unplug it.
You should've said the power strip, we all know what a power strip is. I moved to a journey.
Second, all in favor?
Ew.
I wish I carried it.